We'll call over the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 at 7:04 PM. We can rise for Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you call?
Justin Ballard.
Here.
Marina Homa is absent. Scott Flynn.
Here.
John Knoll is absent. Leslie Kuyler.
Here.
CJ Gosdor.
Here.
And Michelle McQuillan is absent.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda from, for this evening, May 16th?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda, May 16th, 2023.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion adopted. Agenda approved. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 18th, 2023? Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion. Would you like to do a question? You?
We could just switch by.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm moved.
So, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, April 18th, 2023.
Second. All in favor? Say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting minutes from April 18th are approved. Correspondents, I'll make one announcement that CJ Gosdor has been appointed to the Planning Commission by the Village Council. CJ, welcome.
Thanks, everyone.
Madam Secretary, any other correspondence?
No.
Any public comments? Okay, that moves us quickly to item number eight, new business, where we have a proposed parking lot improvement, revised review from the North Oakland Transportation. Mario, will you do the honors and walk through this assessment?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So you have our review letter, I'll be going over it briefly, but as noted, this is a request by the North Oakland Transportation Authority, or NODA, to expand their parking lot at sixteen, six seventy-five South Glasby to allow for a larger facility so that they can accommodate future expansion for their, for their, for their public transportation vehicles. We had an initial site plan and they have provided a revised review. The, the size of the parking lot is remaining the same. When it comes to its use, it's permitted by right of the district. When it comes to the off-street parking requirements, due to the size, the need of the, of the use, they are exceeding our standards. Previously, the Planning Commission did confirm and acknowledge that the additional parking, while above the maximum allowed, the current Planning Commission was, felt it was appropriate to allow for a parking lot of this size, so if you'd like to, you may confirm that. The other issues that really were around, just tweaking some of the configuration to make sure that it functions effectively, number one, with regards to any type of loading space required. Previously, the applicant indicated that the, so just to step back for a second, this building is a two-tenant building, one portion is occupied by NODA, the other is occupied by a company called PYP Ventures, and previously, they had noted that they would, that PYP Ventures would require deliveries by vehicles, and I believe they indicated it would be a tractor-trailer vehicle. So the one thing we noted is that technically, the loading zone provided is right in front of an overhead door, and it doesn't appear to be any other location in which items that are loaded outside of, loaded from the tractor-trailer would be able to get into the building in a convenient way. So we just would like a little clarification from the applicant is if they need that large of a loading facility, space, how is it going to function, given the proposed location, or is there a probability of moving that loading space to another functional spot? Similarly, with regards to a circulation issue, the applicant has provided on the revised plans, a circulation plan for emergency vehicles, and based on the size of the emergency vehicles, typically, they're, they were provided the dimensions from the fire department, and a thirty-five-foot-long emergency vehicle can circulate the site effectively. But we just noted that typically, fuel delivery trucks with their larger tanker plus the tractor, meaning the truck in front, sometimes it can be as much as over fifty-five feet in length. And so, given the location of the proposed outdoor fuel store, fuel tank, and the ability to, we would just like to see a truck maneuvering plan that shows that indeed, a fuel tanker could access that. There seem to be other site improvements that might impact turning radio. So we think this is something that can be easily accomplished, probably would just involve maybe losing a parking space or two and just getting that site circulation to, for the trucks to swing in the right direction. That, the applicant had provided with this middle, a landscaping plan. They are proposing to remaintain some of the existing landscaping, and then they are providing landscaping in the parking lot and as a, as a screen for the parking lot. So they, in general, they are meeting, they are in compliance with our ordinance' quantitative standards with the number of species, of materials and species proposed. One thing we just wanted to point out is that the species proposed, you know, they, while they are tolerant for Michigan's climate, generally, because Planning Commission encourages the use of native species, if you wanted to provide any additional comments for them as to maybe the mix of species to, to, to take a look at that. And then, two last things, when it comes to lighting, that lighting, a lighting plan has been submitted, it is mainly for the rear portion and the new portion of the site, and the light levels are appropriate and consistent. However, we noted that the existing building has wall, standard conventional wall packs on the, on the north elevation, so on the Glasby side, and on the south, excuse me, on the east elevation on the Glasby side, and on the south elevation in the original parking lot configuration. So we would recommend that a photometric plan be modified to show the light levels in those areas, and then, if it's possible, to try and provide additional light levels at the curb cut with, with Glasby, because currently, there is no public lighting along Glasby, and between dusk and dawn, it'd be pretty, it would be more, more safe, a safer environment if they could provide some of the sunlight level so that drivers attempting to access the site would have a, a clearer vision as to where the, the driveway is approaching. So that's just a recommendation as regards to the, the site, the lighting, to make sure it's appropriate. And then finally, the dumpster enclosure, there was modified to go from a single enclosure to a two dumpster enclosure, to, an enclosure appropriate for two large dumpsters, however, just the construction detail was still for the, for the spec, the specs were for a single dumpster. So we've just recommended providing a revised detailed spec. So in the end, the plan is, is, you know, very much further along than the original plan, so, but there are some of these outstanding issues, as I outlined. So if the Planning Commission determines that these issues can be reviewed and approved administratively, we would recommend site plan approval contingent upon addressing the issues that I addressed, and including any items that are noted by the village engineer and the fire marshal. So let's, a summary of our review, and I'll take any questions at the appropriate time.
Thanks, Mario. Commission?
Uh, yes, I do. So, so you're requesting, the first thing is, this middle of a revised plan, which provides a functional off-street loading configuration for deliveries, okay? So, so for clarification, you said that PYP in the front makes, will need deliveries on occasion, right?
Yeah.
And so, Mario, you're saying that to make sure that there's enough unloading capabilities? Is that what you're requesting?
Uh, basically, so that it can access the, the building, because the proposed loading zone would, would put the truck right in front of the overhead door. So for example, if they're getting any kind of materials that are unloaded via like a forklift or a high-low, you know, taking out of that, how would that get into the building?
There are actually two overhead doors there? I was just, yeah.
What I was trying to figure out is like, if there is some other, without having the interior floor planned, it wasn't clear as to where the other overhead doors lead, led to, so I wasn't sure, like, but if that's something that's feasible, then that would be appropriate. So you're saying that there is a, a access, a secondary access to the, the loading area and that would work?
Yes, there are, there are two overhead doors, there's actually one just to the north of the loading area itself, that's not shown on that plan, but there are two overhead doors, so the ten-by-fifty space would block one overhead door, but there's one on the north side of that that they could still access, and they both access the same area in the back.
Jim, I believe it's Jim.
Yeah.
Just for protocol, can you stand up, name of an address and affiliation?
Sure. Jim Sharp, a Sharp engineer, so we recommend he know this part of the, doing, doing this design, so I'll stand up here and answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Okay, so, because, okay, so in this case, the, the two are, one's, one's on the south side of the building, right? If I remember the property right, because I've been, I've been by there a couple, a couple times, and then there's one in the back, in the very back, correct?
That's right. There's two in the back.
There's two in the back, uh, yes, two in the back. And so, specifically, you're just looking for more information, Mario, on how that's going to be unloaded from PYP up in that?
Yeah, I, I would just say, as long as they identify that second exterior door, that address station.
Yeah, and we can do that on a revised plan. In addition, I think that NODA, you know, this original plan was brought to you before the, what was it, a bond or a village?
The village passed.
That was passed, so there's been a few changes, and although PYP is there right now, they are looking to, I guess, find another space for them, so that NODA could then have that entire building.
What were the main, forgive me, I don't remember, what were the major changes between this design and the previous one? Because I believe, if I remember right, we approved the, the original one, and how different are the, are the changes between this and the one we approved?
Uh, this one really just has more detail, for example, the previous plan did not have any landscaping or lighting details at all, and this one just modified the parking slightly by providing the lawn area, for example, that's midway between Glasby and the rear of the site. That was originally, I believe that was a reason for some parking spaces. And so this plan is just more detailed, and then one, as I mentioned, one of the other slight modifications is that they decide, they, they, they needed a two dumpster enclosure rather than a single. So these, these plans are just providing more detail, and previously, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they needed some type of preliminary approval so they could move forward with that configuration, and then knowing that they just have to come back for final site plan approval.
Correct.
That was basically the gist of it, we just kind of cleaned some, cleaned some things up based on the comments that were received at the preliminary approval.
I'm good with that one.
Okay.
So I was, I was curious, like, when, when these come in, like, what kind of investment does the city have to make? Like, do we have to pay anything for them to, like, is there any sort of investment we have to make, or is it all on the NODA's side?
It's all on the dollar per se.
It's all right. Yeah.
Leslie?
Uh, yeah, I have some questions about landscape plan.
Can we, before we do that?
Okay.
Can we, so?
You want to go down the list?
I just wanted, I was, yeah, I was just going, I just wanted to kind of go down some of the open points, the second one. So, so from the, so from this middle of a revised plan, and what kind of, what you're looking for, it's more specifically the location of the doors, Mario, of how they're going to be unloaded?
Yeah, just for, for paragraph C, the only thing that we need to do is just provide a, modify the, the, the site plan sheet to show that second overhead door in the back.
Got it.
So similarly, so like on page?
It's noted on sheet one, but it's just labeled as OH door or whatever on there. I guess maybe it's clearly identified as the other one.
Yeah, this on OH three is, you know, they're dark black.
Exactly. Yep. So we can bring that up, that's not a problem?
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the second question was, this middle of a truck maneuvering plan, detail showing that tractor-trailers and fuel, fuel vehicles can circulate, knowing, it's like, let's say, semis typically, semis that come in, it's, knowing the way this piece of property kind of works, is that they would probably most likely back up?
That's what they currently do, right?
Because, because the configuration where they just back up into the property, unload, and then kind of, and then leave.
Keep in mind, this is a, this is a thousand-gallon fuel tank, you're not going to be getting big semis coming in, those are much larger than that. These are going to be more like the size of a, you know, like a Cuban or something, I think the Corbin oils or something that you see driving around here, so I don't believe that you're going to get semi-trucks for your?
Like the gas station ones? Not like those?
No, no, you're not going to be getting those, so to have a semi circulating around here, you're not going to get that. We can get a fire truck around there, the thirty-five-foot fire truck, and that, I don't think that the fuel trucks will be any larger than.
So then, then, just in all, it would be necessary, when you said note added to the site plan, that with like, maybe a little graphic, because I, I remember now, like the Corbin oil ones, yeah, they're about like thirty-five, forty-five, something like that, and they're only like a four, a five, a three axle or something.
I think there's, you know, one in the front, two in the back, maybe three in the back, yeah, they're, they're not very big.
So, that was more just about an informational issue, like, if they needed to have a, because in a good situation where it is like a longer tractor-trailer that is about fifty-five feet, the ordinance, technically, by the ordinance, you're not supposed to use public streets as part of your circulation pattern. So you're, you're, given the size of the site, if they needed a semi-truck, they could have a semi circulate the, the plan, the site, it would just impact the parking configuration. But because their, their vehicle that's going to be utilized is a smaller vehicle, all that's necessary is a note that says that they'll be utilizing a, you know, X linear foot fuel truck. Because as he mentioned, if it's about thirty, same size as a, you know, as an emergency vehicle, then, then they've already shown that emergency vehicle can access the site freely, so.
Keep in mind, those spaces back there are a little bit bigger than your typical space, because they're for the buses. So instead of your standard nine-by-eighteens, which you allow here in the village, for your, these, these are a one-by-twenty-five, you know, so they're a little bit bigger spaces as well.
Okay.
Just under, you know, some of these two, right?
Not on the two, no.
Let's go down the list then?
Yeah.
You had a note, you wanted to go down?
With regards to?
Yeah.
With regards to the photometric?
Yes.
Uh, just talking to Lynn about that, and I guess we could add a light up front, she said that the lighting is limited right now, so if we needed to add an additional light up there, we could, now, that's the office area up front, so we could add, add some light.
Is it, so, since, so since it's the parking lot, right, realistically, a lot of this has to do with the parking lot itself, and a lot, like, the, the current lights, not, you know, this is just, I'm just throwing this out there, is, you have an existing light plan, and it, and what we're looking at is not, if you, it's a recommendation for it, but the, kind of at the end of the day, you already have lights up there, I don't necessarily think that a lighting plan for the front end is hundred percent necessary, but that's just, that's my personal opinion for the reason of that.
And, and the reason for all the additional parking, as Mario had mentioned, is, you know, the way NODA functions, right? You need places to park the buses, you know, while they're not in use, and then the drivers come in and they utilize these spaces, you know, the smaller spaces, they park their personal vehicles there, and then they come in, they, you know, get keys, and the way they go on, on the road. So that's why we, I mean, it's a, it's a completely different function, it's not a restaurant or something like that, you know, they have to drop off their personal vehicles so they can get in their work vehicles, essentially.
Mario, your last statement on section F of the assessment indicates that the light levels at Glasby Street curb cut should be at sufficient levels so traveling drivers can adequately identify the driveway's location. What was the basis for that statement, and how would we then define sufficient?
So, the basis for that is just to make sure that the site functions safely, and I've noted, I've, I've, honestly, I've been driving around more on Glasby at night, just looking at all the other uses that are coming in, and noticed that a lot of, it's very dark back there, and while yes, vehicles, light headlights can, are intended to provide, you know, safe driving, most communities do have minimum standards at the curb cuts, so that way, they're easily seen, so you can see your destination, as to how to, how to access a site. And given the fact that this is going to be a vehicle, a lot of vehicles potentially coming in and out, and, and I, while I don't know the full range of hours that NODA provides service, chances are, when there's, you know, daylight savings time, there's, you know, vehicles that'll be there, even at, like even at seven or eight o'clock at night, or even in the morning on the other side, you know, it'll be dark. And so, while our ordinance doesn't speak to it specifically as a requirement, one of the things it does speak to is that we do, right now, limit the maximum intensity, because a lot of times, businesses try to increase their, their light levels, so, and, and conventional or standard sites, we have a maximum light level of ten-foot candles, but we do allow for, in areas of intense vehicular use, such as the area underneath gas station pumps, cannibals, or outdoor sales areas, shall be twenty feet, so we allow them to have a higher light level, just because of their level of activity and the amount of vehicles interacting with, with pedestrians. So, once again, it's not a requirement, it's just a suggestion as to make it, make it a little bit safer for them, so it's just, like you said, an observation and a suggestion.
Then, the requirement, shifting the discussion from recommendation, you indicate in that same section that southern elevation are not in compliance with ordinance standards, cannot provide sufficient lighting. That, that is, I mean, something that must be addressed, that to be compliant with the ordinance.
And that, that's about the, the glare from the lights that are coming up, because a conventional wall pack has lighting that's directed forward. Our ordinance does require fully shielded lighting, which just means that they can be, light is supposed to be directed downward, so that's either, the applicant could either just put in what's called a wall pack, wall pack glare shield, it's like fifteen dollars at Home Depot, it's a piece of metal that goes on and it does that, or conventionally, if they wanted to, they could put in new fixtures, because the new fixtures are LED, they're more energy efficient, and you can actually choose like the amount of lights, the LED modules in the light, because they, the new, new ones, even though they're on a building, if you correct, pick the right amount of modules, you can throw light as much as forty feet from, from the side of the building. So, once again, the, the fact of the wall, the light emanating forward, it's really the ones that, more of an issue are the ones that are on the, the Glasby side at the east elevation, but typically, all our lighting is supposed to be fully shielded, so it's a matter of just fixing those with the wall packs.
That's existing, I mean, we're looking at, so we're looking, talking about the parking lot, and we're not talking about the building itself, what they're adding, it's a?
Parking lot, lotting expansion, these points are?
Are more towards a, let's say, a building remodel, more or less than?
But if you, if you assess the function of the, the parking lot, you have employees coming in, driving, parking, getting in their work vehicle, leaving. I don't know the exact shift pattern, but there is the traffic, maybe not like a loom next door, but traffic, so the lighting intended to ensure safety of parking lot as it's expanded and improved.
Okay.
What about lighting for the fuel station? Mario's there?
I was just using that as an example, there is no, as a, when it comes to the actual fueling, the, the tank, and having it be fueled, there actually, technically, right now, there's no requirement for a minimum light level. Our ordinance actually doesn't speak to it specifically, it just speaks to it, once again, in broad terms of making sure that the site is safe and functional. They actually did, on this revised plan, did propose a, a parking lot light hole right at that, at the fuel tank, so they are, they did find that as, as, I mean, presumably found it necessary for the function of it.
Sure.
So, so they are providing that, and so, yeah, the rear part of the, of the site, all the, the light, the photometric plan shows that everything would be a safe light level, still in compliance with ordinance's maximums, and create a safer environment. It was just, given the fact that, just making suggestions for, for getting to the rest of the site, so the entire site can function, that, that is safe and high.
Right, okay.
Leslie, do you have any, do you have any questions about that?
No, I don't. You guys asked us things that I just wondered about, sorry.
My, my comments regarding the lighting, first and foremost, is to make sure that we're in compliance with the ordinance, the reality, I mean, I think you were maybe making this point, it's an improvement to an existing structure, the building, I really don't have any concerns about e, even this contingency or condition. So Leslie, no comments on lighting?
No additional comments.
Okay, fair enough. I think the dumpster enclosure, if we're good with three, and my number four is self-explanatory. Just looking for, you know, feedback, if there's any issues there. That brings to?
Yeah, I, I'd say, you know, number four is just the, that's just clerical, make some adjustments to the dumpster enclosure.
The landscape plan.
Yes, so I have a couple of questions about the proposed landscape plan. So, the plan on L2 goes with the plant schedule on L3, right?
I believe so, this is done by Scott, so I'm looking at them on his behalf.
Okay, because, because I, I don't see some of these trees on this plan, I was wondering if maybe there was a substitution on the plant schedule list or something that was done. For example, the little leaf lindens, there are numerous little leaf lindens here, but there's only four specified in the list. That would be one example. Another example would be that there are three crimson century Norway maples on your list, but I see one, I'm trying to find them all, I see one. And, and so, the first thing I want to establish is whether this list is supposed to refer to this, or if the plan needs to, you know, be revised to show where these other species are, because this is pretty homogeneous when it comes to the deciduous trees.
All right, with regards, just that I'm looking at real quick, the little leaf lindens, those are identified in the islands, there's four of them that I've seen, so that would match up?
Right.
With those?
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Okay, so, I, I don't have any questions about those, but I do want to say that wherever crimson century Norway maple are, are specified, they should be substituted with a native Michigan maple or some other native Michigan tree, because Norway maples have some aggressive and invasive properties, especially near woodlands. So I, I would like to ask that any other shade tree, it could be a, a disease-resistant oak, or amalanchiers, or, you know, other maples besides the one that was already in the list, which is the autumn blaze. besides the one that was already in the list, which is the autumn blaze. That would be another thing that I wondered about, and
Are those Norway maples, are they prohibited, or are they just not a natural
I'm not going to say they're prohibited, I'm going to say that they're, they're undesirable species. They're undesirable in the same way that the box elders and poplars that you're removing are undesirable. And they're not native, and so what happens is they move into open areas and their seeding patterns you know, take over for the natural maples. And so, that is why they're discouraged in some places. And it should be fairly easy to switch those out.
Okay.
So, those were my questions there. The other thing I wanted to comment on is, I'm glad that the existing trees that are being removed, they're mostly the undesirable trees anyway, so I'm glad that was intended to. And I think that pretty much pretty much takes care of my questions. Let's see, we have four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So, the little leaf linden would be more than the thirty-three percent, isn't it, Mario?
I was looking at the graphics, because normally I am used to landscape plan where every, you know, graphic symbol has a, has a two-digit, or two-text summary and then a quantity. But, when I looked at it, to me, I thought I only found the four. I didn't know there were more than that, because the, based on the quantities in the schedule, they're in compliance. But if we do have more, I just didn't see any more.
Okay.
Did you, did you, you know, where it went in the north, or?
Well, I, I must have miscounted, so, but I just wanted to make sure that of the deciduous trees here, there are four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And so, the maximum of any one is thirty percent, isn't it?
Correct.
So, is it four too many of the little leaf lindens in that scheme?
Well, I
Or are you including the evergreens in the list?
I, because the zoning ordinance doesn't specify, like, how that distinction of materials is, I've kind of grouped it as trees and trees.
Okay, okay.
So, that, that means in this case, the, the four would be okay.
So, in this case, we'll
Yeah.
Assume that's in compliance, okay. And those were my main questions and
So, I'm hearing you switch out the Norway maples with something that's more natural to the area.
Yes, Michigan mega.
Michigan.
It could be another maple, as long as it's not the same exact, or I suggested some other shade tree.
It wasn't too bad, Leslie.
Huh?
It wasn't that bad, you actually asked, one of the best landscaping reviews that it's a very Leslie just didn't really just like, brah, terrible.
That's because he listened last time.
This isn't, this isn't a Chuck Snyder property.
Do we have, like, a list of those, like, of trees, like native plants, that we can just give?
Well, there are lists available, and then a lot of times, if they want to follow up with me, I help point them in the direction of appropriate plans that would be, you know, suitable. Michigan State University has a native plant list that a lot of people refer to, but we don't keep one here in the village, which might, maybe we can change that, that's one of the discussion points, perhaps.
Hold that thought for about eight minutes. Leslie, anything else on the landscape plan?
Pardon?
Anything else?
Anything else? No, I do not have anything else.
All right, thank you. Joe, the last comment here is regarding notes from the village engineer and the fire marshal. I don't see a report out from the fire marshal.
I didn't, I didn't either, I was on them. I, I don't know if he just shared with Kim as more the same, I think he's approved the, everything with the fueling.
It's on the fuel, he saw, the first time I approved it, but he wanted to see the fuel.
And I assume there's already a max box on there, on the building?
Is there a max box?
I figured there probably was.
I believe that there is.
Yeah, at this point, so, I haven't seen his review, but I don't think anything came up last time either. The one part I did, on the interview, he did mention about the underground tank, you know, how that got, I was wondering, in there. Yes, he's talking about, in addition to the existing parking, a new thousand gallon underground fuel tank is also proposed. But I don't know where that came from, there must have been some kind of note floating around.
It's not underground.
Yeah, nobody wants to go underground nowadays, right? So, he didn't have much to say.
And then I think
Other than, you know, James, you know, he put, after town, it was the Village of Oxford.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's a boilerplate.
I caught that, I caught that, and then I think Mr. O'Meara's letter from Row Engineering, I think that came back very clean, too.
Yeah, that's what we're just, yeah, that's what we're looking at.
He had any issues either.
Yep.
Thanks, we should be able to administer a point that can be addressed. Justin, any other comments for you?
I'm not reading this anymore.
And Leslie, double check, you're okay?
Yes.
My initial concerns were, concern more or less, was the ability for the organ, the the village to manage conditional approvals administratively, being transparent, and into this discussion. But we've had good dialogue on most of those open points. So, does anyone on the commission have a, want to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the notar revised proposed parking lot improvements at 675 Glassby, contingent upon the recommendations outlined by McKenna Letter dated May 11th, 2020. Recommendations to landscaping. Any items recommended, or, any items recommended by the village engineer and fire marshal.
Do we have a second?
I still have a second.
Go ahead.
Madam Secretary, can we take a roll call vote?
Sure, that was second by Godzor? Godzor?
Godzor.
Godzor, sorry, Godzor.
Yes.
You're for or against?
Oh, I am for.
Valerie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Isaac. And the rest are absent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Old business, the 2022 annual review letter and discussion on the 2023 action plan.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I understand in our, our last meeting, there was some general discussion of, of last year, as well as dialogue on our 23 action plan. But because there were other commissioners not in attendance, it was tabled this discussion with, which we now encounter additional absenteeism. So, my initial thought is, for myself, wasn't there, we can have just a quick discussion, but we may end it with the same conclusion that, let's wait until we have a full full party, in order to make a final determination. So, there were, if anything on the annual review to, to comment, my suggestion is to focus on the action plan for 2023. But if there is anything to highlight in that 22 review, Justin, Leslie?
I don't see anything in the site, in the reviews that I think should be amended or modified in any way, I think it's pretty complete. My main concern, like yours, is really to work on the action plan and determine what that would be.
Okay. Then going through the action plan, there's five items that we had, or were proposed. The zoning ordinance reviews. Now, initial discussion on this particular point. I assume that there is a, maybe shame on me for assuming, but that those zoning ordinance reviews are continued and maintained, updated with, updated with current standards, and may or may not be applicable for our commission to focus on that. The other comments from the commission, or Mark?
Well, one good thing, part of the discussion last time was to make sure that something as broad as, as this description wouldn't do any, result in any unnecessary work, or broadly go over ordinances that may not be necessary. So, necessary to review. So, one way, a couple ways you can do that, is you could look at your master plan to see if there's any specific ordinances that, that it recommends being looked at, and then use, use the master plan as your guide, as, as we should. But, one other way to, would be just to have a, a brief discussion as to ordinances that might come up in the course of our, of your, you know, the work you've been doing in the past year, to see if, maybe that's something you need to look at. So, and I, and one of those that is, does stand out is, is the landscape ordinance, is the idea of possibly taking a look at that to make it a little bit more modern, look at ways, one ways I like to look at it is trying to better reflect the different areas of the village. So, for example, some of the smaller lots in the, closer to the village, or the downtown center, you know, the amount of space necess, available for landscaping is minimal. But that doesn't mean there could be other alternatives to the landscaping in that area. So, that would be something that could possibly be looked at, is like to minimize the, the, some of the extensive landscaping by compensating it with appropriate landscaping in the area. And then other ways, you can also look at it, it does blend into others, items is there'll be other ways that landscaping can, can maybe be more, more functional. Like, dealing with, using, utilizing landscaping to better function as a stormwater mechanism, to, to take in water and allow for natural infiltration. So, those are just examples of two things that could be done specifically in that ordinance. But then, getting back to other ordinances, there, there might be something you don't need to, to look at, only if you think that, based on your previous experience, oh, well, maybe this is something we want to touch on. I would, lately, I've been dealing a lot with a lot of lighting issues in, in my communities. So, I do think sometimes lighting and the issues I brought up, I think are sometimes worth a discussion. Because they, they can have minimal impact on development, but they can have a lot of maximum benefit, a significant benefit to, to the community. And then another key aspect is, lighting, when installed incorrectly, can have a real negative impact on adjacent residences. And we, we have some smaller lots that are close to some businesses, so it might be necessary to look at those just to strengthen some of the, and clarify also, make things simpler, too, like, a lot of times looking at zoning ordinance, it doesn't mean making it bigger, it means making it more clear. You know, sometimes there's a, one aspect that people like to approach it as is lean zoning. So, you look at the ordinances and say, well, how could this be a little bit clarified, a little bit the language, so that it's more direct. So, that's one way to look at it. But then also, I think it's important to look at the character of the village and say, right, one issue we're facing with, like, because for example, if it was lighting, we don't want to have any lights shining in people's residences, what else can we do to make sure that never happens, that sort of thing.
Actually, those items that you just mentioned have come up organically in our reviews, they just come up a lot. So, maybe that's one way to guide, I think that's what you're suggesting in a way, is some of the things that come up might need focus. And historic preservation is on this list in general, I don't think it comes up until I think about what we're looking at, you know, design standards, and like the, the last meeting, we had a revised plan for a building that didn't fit the historic character. So, I think that's a potential area also, that, you know, we might, could look at. I, I think if we generate too many things to look at, we couldn't accomplish them, at least not on, you know, one year. But, I, I think that's one way, I mean, obviously, we could look at the master plan, kind of go through it, piece by piece, but then are we really addressing the things that keep coming up? So, my, my vote would be to look at, what are we always talking to people about? Lighting is one that comes up a lot. Landscaping, not just because of me, all right, but because it comes up. It's not clear, or more modifications might be helpful if they're clarified in the ordinance, so that's my vote on that. And possibly historic preservation, you know, in some sense, but
If we choose to take a deeper dive on ordinances that may be misaligned with trends in other similar municipalities, there should be some overlap between the ordinance objective and the historic preservation focal point, I think. Some other thoughts, you know, I, I read the meeting minutes from last week, there was a comment about not wanting to do work, just simply to do work. So, so want to be, I, I think we need to be specific in our action plan, rather than broad stroke of, oh, let's take a review of the zoning ordinances. Once we have others, I think my recommendation will be, I'm not sure lighting is important. We tried to address some elements of lighting last year that the rest of the commission didn't necessarily feel was needed. The dimmer switch, I think specifically.
Right.
But I would like to maybe make a suggestion or request, not formally now, but when we're ready to do so, to identify trends in other similar cities, villages, et cetera, where are we seeing them make changes in their ordinance? That then be compared to two ordinances we have in place and adopt, or really focus on best practices that are being executed.
Sure. Who, who would determine those things? Are you suggesting that Mario would do that, at ground comparison and research?
I would mask the question, Mario, is there capability to conduct the general assessment, executive summary on trends in other areas, that we can then just simply review and look at, make a determination on?
Yeah, absolutely, it's something that could be, you know, I could prepare, and it could be, you know, pretty, pretty, not broad, but at least identify a topic and identify, like, the, the key issues likely people have been dealing with. And then just provide that, in no particular order, and no recommendation, just different topics to talk about and consider. I guess the only thing I would say to that, though, would be in addition to that, maybe look, maybe identifying other, or other issues might be affecting the village and, and include those in the conversation. So, like, because every now and then, we do have things that come up administratively, that might be a, a small issue. It's a small tweak, can be taken care of, but there might be worth, worthwhile to also include the administration's suggestions about, you know, items that we've talked about, that might be necessary to address.
And if I could, to Mario's point, the planning commission, you guys and other members in the past couple of years, have made several updates and changes to the ordinance, you know, the clear vision areas and things where it was only, it wasn't designed, been designed there already, something like that, it wasn't there, it was a normal section, but that does, it was added. The commercial vehicle descriptions, and we updated that a little bit better. So, all of those multiple amendments have been incorporated, and Mario sent me, I think, November or so last year. So, all those things you've done in the last year or two, that made those tweaks, that's in the current ordinance that we have now. The one item that I brought up to you and I mentioned to Justin today is about the signs. The sign ordinance, when I first came around, I thought, wow, this is really strict. Okay, so it's frankenboots, right, but they're doing it for a reason. Frankenboots, you know, you got a McDonald's and frankenboots signs about this lid, you know, you don't see big arches. That's their choice, and everyone complies with it, it's tough, but it wouldn't, you still find McDonald's, right? So, you have this rural downtown that they're trying to protect, they don't want to look like a strip mall, makes perfect sense. But then you have a strip mall down the road, so you got to kind of make sure everything meshed together. The one item I, I thought they may have overreacted on, maybe did the ordinance in from sixteen to seventeen, it was specifically the awnings, where it says, you're allowed to have sanitary, one awning per business. And in a lot of cases, that's bang, you know, if you're a lawyer, if you have a, a house in South Washington, maybe there's an awning out front, that's all they need. But many of the downtown businesses have front and rear entrances, why not maybe pass a look at one per front each, or one, you know, because I think it was the overreaction of the wireless toys building on two South Washington that had yellow awnings all the way around the place, and every awning was just loaded with ledging and stuff, so. way around the place and every awning was just loaded with lettering and stuff, so I think they, when I'll be down to one, and maybe two would have been a better number, maybe one per front or something like that.
Well, that has come up again, you know, that's another of those things that's specific to our community that, you know, might be time for us to pay attention to.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that's a, another good point.
Other than that, it's restrictive, but that is what it is, that's the character that they want to maintain, the size, how high a sign can be, how large it can be. I was asked today specifically, why don't you take a chance to get a variance to have a larger sign on the old Williams Art Glass Building? And a lot of times people talk about variances, they say, well, just go get a variance, go get one, go ask for one, and you don't get them because you want, because you don't like the ordinance, right? And I explained to Kelly, the DVA director, and the person that's buying and only wants to turn it into an event center stuff, and, you know, that's a large building, it's forty feet across or fifty feet across, whatever, but they're thirty square foot, they're capped at thirty square foot because it's one square foot per linear foot, a frontage to a maximum of thirty. Now, you have this big, huge building up front and you have this small sign in the middle, yeah, it looks a little weird, but that's what the ordinance is. And if they configured it, they had it stacked up, if they configured it in a line, then they would get more bang for their buck, I explained, or so they were gonna go back and reconfigure instead of having it stacked up, the up top, which takes up three square feet, they're wasting. So, there's, sometimes they just have to go back and review their approach too.
Right, be more creative.
Yeah, because, to be honest with you, it's hard to keep everybody compliant, I could point to a dozen signs downtown, windows, the window lettering stuff that are not compliant. Some of those people sit on boards and commissions in the village, and it gets out of hand and it's, I get what they're, you know, especially if you're a retail place, you're trying to survive, you know, so the twenty-five foot percent coverage on a window sign, those are reasons for that somewhere, right? Somebody felt, they didn't want this to look like a party store that's littered with, you know, every liquor you could think of, every belt you can think of, pit plaster everywhere, they don't want it to look like that, so they found this spot, that's what they found acceptable, you know, in today's climate, you know, maybe, maybe there's a little movement, maybe twenty-five percent is a little small, but that's for you guys to decide. But, the signage is one that really rankles people a lot because they think they want to do this and they want to do that, why can't I do this, why can't I do that? And there's reasons why the historical downtown is, want to be protected, the lighting, internally illuminated lighting in the downtown, some of those, they look nice, those channel cut letters are internally illuminated, that's the same thing you see at a strip mall, right? I think there was a desire to make those difficult to get, to use the gooseneck lighting because that aligned with the plan, historical look more. But there's always an option to come to the planning commission for that special sign use, and I don't know how you deny somebody, you've approved so many of them, I mean, unless it was an outrageous design, I don't know, but didn't get subjective.
Right, yes.
I remember when the phone tour came in, that wreck, it was bright fluorescent green and, and they were allowed to go in and some people didn't like it because it didn't look good. Apparently on improvement, it's a nice design, but it's a little, you know, like you'd see on a store on M24 somewhere else, but they, they might be seen, if they don't get seen, they don't stay. That's about it for me.
Thanks, Joe.
I guess, another thing that I think would help is if we kind of built like a system of like priorities or just some things that, like, general statements on things that like, that we care about, like that we really want to see like pushed forward, like if you really care about historical preservation, like, okay, like what's getting in the way of that, push that forward. What you really care about, having a balanced budget, okay, like, something that would be really important is, okay, like, what's the, what's the tax generated per acre of land versus like other things? And I think that it would really help guide what we're trying to do rather than just trying to like shoot at silly directions at once.
There definitely needs to be a refined scope.
Right.
In order to set realistic expectations, I think the, which we're not going to solve here, we're not going to solve that tonight, but certainly I think the intent is to identify no more than three key points for us to demonstrate and achieve successful results at the end of the year. So, in the twenty-three annual report comes out, there's documented success there. Or, or not, at least general discussion where we have addressed what the planning commission had identified as a key priority. My recommendation is, we've had our dialogue, now we'll have to push this agenda and run to the next meeting again. My initial thought, based on Joe's comments, addressing ordinance issues or review of signage and awnings, double dipping in ordinance review and historic preservation, maybe also addressing the landscape ordinance as well, simply because while there is a, what's the term, horticultural expert on the planning commission, that may not be the case in the future, so identify subject versus subject.
Also, it's more than that, but it's also to streamline and ease the burden as much as possible on the administrative staff by clarifying the rules enough so that the proposed applications and site plans are a little more complete, that would be helpful to everybody.
Appointments as well.
Yes, applicants as well, and then as, you know, Mario was just pointing out a moment ago, there are things that can be looked at by the commission in an ordinance manner that might also help with other, like stormwater management, for example, by encouraging certain practices, blah, blah, blah. So, what if we generate a list of four or five possible topics and then next time we're here, we select amongst ourselves the three that we consider priorities, I think that idea of priority makes sense. And it may be these three things, but that way, if there's something else that would come up that the other members, you know, can't speak to because they're not here tonight, they could, you know, add those in and we could decide together. So, I agree that three is probably, you know, plenty to work on with.
Maybe even be too much.
Maybe, but, but then things could carry over too.
Sure.
I mean, I think we're missing a piece of this, it's like, is there any way for us to get like a wish list from, like, from the stakeholders so that like, we're not just dealing with like what we think is important, but like, that, like, I don't know, we could ask the DVA for something like that, like, oh, what like, what do your, what do your stakeholders need, and that way we can kind of reach across the aisle, it's not just about us.
I, I think there's a couple things here, I asked, like, one of the things is that, first of all, is that we need to know, it's a combination of a couple things, is that we, as commissioners, need to know what the ordinances are. Number two is, one of the things as well is, we don't know that an ordinance doesn't comply or doesn't, isn't quite clear until an issue does come up. So, it's one thing to say, hey, yes, we need to know all the ordinances, but we don't know that it's not clear until it actually becomes an issue. Then we can come and say, hey, look, all right, that is something that needs to be addressed because it is not clear. So, in this case, like landscaping could be massaged and could be done a little bit better, the clarity of, clarity of the sign or a sign that, the sign on the awning on both sides could potentially be a very good issue for us. I think it's one of those where we as, you know, as commissioners, we need to do our due diligence and do our homework and take a look at that, and then as things kind of pop up, then we kind of look and address those things, because that's just my personal take on that, that's part of where we don't want to just do work to do work, and we can't just, and I, we can't just send Mario and say, hey, Mario, go do an assessment for us, because that right there costs us money and that, you know, that's doing work to, to see some of those things. We need to kind of take a look at it and say, all right, this is something that's been very unclear because this is something that's near and dear to my heart that I want to, everybody to take a look at. A great example of that is, I tried to bring that to the table because we were coming to meetings and the only thing on the agenda was the light dimmer switch, and so one of my suggestions was to put that into the ordinance. Regardless if it passed or it didn't pass, it makes no difference, it's just something that I saw that, that I thought could be helpful and, and that's kind of like the examples I think we should be maybe working through and working towards. It's us doing the homework and then us bringing in that. And as problems come up, because we'll probably have a couple more things come up over the course of the, course of the year, where, all right, that doesn't make, that, that needs updating. That's, that's my two cents, that's my thought on that.
Then if I may summarize.
Yeah, just, to your point CJ, not only being proactive versus reactive is good, but in this sense, you kind of need to be reactive. You're gonna react to what the problems have persistently come up, right? Everything else seems to be working fine. Again, you don't know what the problem is until they arise, and a couple of these things that have come up a few times, maybe we can't dictate what plants they use necessarily, but we can give them a better list, a, or state in there.
Yes.
The preference is not invasive native mission species, and here's, and by the way, here's a list of a hundred of them, knock yourself out, you need ten, you know, at least then they know, they don't come up like every one of them being wrong. So, by just being a little proactive because we're reacting to the problem, that will help streamline, streamline. And when you say stakeholders, it's, we might get an engineering company that comes in one time and you'll never see them again. So, we can't work with them as a partner in a way because they come and go with the wind. So, Jim Sharp, his office is right in the village, he's around on M24, so he's around it, of course, we see him often. But again, I think as the problems crop up, right, is, you're gonna react to those, try to lessen those things a little bit. And the DVA, of course, I talk to Kelly every day, Terry talks to her every day, business people in and out of her all the time, we hear from them some of the things, and it's a learning curve from them, a lot of times people are getting into a business that never had before, some of the marijuana site plans they came through, people are doing site plans that have never done site plans before, you know, they're engineers and stuff, so those are learning curve on their end too. I try to tell people, get the ordinance, go through it, look at the traffic, look at your landscape, look at your lighting, look at all these things, so when you bring it to us, it's not half-baked, let's at least be ninety-five percent baked.
Yeah.
Just make sure you have a lawyer to help you explain and help to, like, all the verdicts.
Yeah, so, to some point, we're being reactive, which typically isn't the best way to do it, but we're only reacting to the problems, we don't want to look for problems that you're running, right?
But at the same time, your sign comments suggest that that's coming from, you know, DVA experience, I mean, that is in a way.
Yeah.
Getting feedback from.
And that's what triggered the statement.
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly right, and again, we, we got this, we hear it, and we issue the permits all the time, and sometimes people wish they could do this and wish they could do that, they can't because the ordinance is a little bit, and it's right in most cases, it's there for a reason. Those are a couple of ideas that I think you guys are gonna address and see what you think of.
Terry, if I may summarize and we can put these in the meeting minutes, the expectation is for the next meeting, commissioners take a look at trends that we've seen in past meetings that have been not necessarily controversial or an issue, but repeat themes, and then bring a recommendation, no more than three items, at least one, or not, and with a rationale and justification for why.
Trust me.
Yeah. Hundred percent accountability. I mean, you know, if, if you're gonna make a recommendation, demonstrate that you've done homework in order to justify why, you have to sell the rest of the commissioners on signing up, they'll also do work to review that at your request, so for the next meeting, let's focus on, on that. Maybe one top priority and two backups, just a suggestion.
Well, whatever those are, they're, if they continue to be relevant, they're gonna carry over to later years, whether we finish them or not, so. It still turns out to be like two or three main areas that people think keep coming up.
Can we only change these at least, like, at this time? Can we do them at any time during the year if we feel that there's a change?
Anytime. This is a simple, this, my understanding is we're, we are establishing our action plan for the year that then gets communicated to the village council, so they can understand and have some visibility to what we are doing here from the planning commission. So, the action plan may tend to be high level, in what is reported to the council, but for the sake of this discussion, it's gonna need to be specific so we can identify clear action items and next steps to bring closure. Any other comments on the annual report or action plan? Okay, then, I don't believe we need to take a roll call vote to close or move on. Public comment is next. Let's see, anyone other than Joe over there? Consultant or administration comments?
I, I just want to say that, to keep in mind that you have a pretty darn good zoning ordinance, you know, and for twenty-three years of being involved in other communities, if you don't, you generally tend to have a lot more problems come your way, so when you're seeing the same things over and over again, you know, you're right, those are the ones that you really want to take a look at because there's something wrong if every time, you know, or if with such frequency, everybody's having the same issues. But overall, I think you have a really good ordinance, it'd be hard to have anybody come to the zoning board to overturn your decision, to get clarification, I mean, it's, it's a good, good ordinance. And, you know, the more familiar you become with it, the more you have opportunity or exposure to other communities, you'll, you'll see that more and more. So, I just wanted to let you know that you're, I don't feel you're deficient at all, your discussions are very thorough and so, you know, concentrating on smaller things, because you're gonna have things come your way and they're gonna require your attention, you don't want to be bogged down with all this other stuff that you really don't need to attend to unless there, there's a reason for it, so. I think that was Justin's comment last meeting too, Jerry, lessons, so I just wanted to...
That is a great, that is a great point about, you know, in the four years that I, there's only been one ZBA meeting that I know of since I, you know, for the four years that I've been, so that's actually, you know, that's a really, really great point.
We joke about in our office, because Dan Durn, our code enforcement officer, lives in Orange Township and he's on the ZBA, they meet twice a month and they have six or eight cases each week. Wow.
Wow.
In my fifteen years, I don't think we've had six ZBA meetings in fifteen years. But there's a definite, and there's a fence ordinance where it's gotta be ten foot off the line, that drives a lot of, and that's just ridiculous, why they won't change it? I don't know, a ZBA should not be meeting twice a month and have five, six, seven cases each time, that's beyond ridiculous.
That's a great point.
I, I just applaud that.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Anything else? Report out Oxford Township Planning Commission.
Oh, let's see, the, let's see what, what are some of the things that we did, you know, I think everyone does know that we're getting to talk about in Myers, so that has been, I mean, they've actually put that building up very, very quickly.
Started there, yeah.
That's right. McLaren started, broke ground, so they've gotten cleared out the trees and they'll be, they'll be expanding. There was a request to put in, to change, within Boulder Point, there is two, there was two pieces of property that were sewn commercial, and it was part of a larger plan within Boulder Point because there was, it was supposed to be like an enclosed community where they had school and they had businesses and restaurants. Well, the parcels that were currently C1, there was a developer that wanted to put rezonant to multi-family residential and that they would put townhouses in, and there was a pretty large backlash from Boulder Point. It was, it was, it was pretty overwhelming how consistent that it was with the community, they were adamant that they did not want it. So, in thinking with, you know, following the guidelines with the planning, with the planning commission and they felt that it was not, would not fit within it, so that rezoning was denied. So, I know that there's a few more things that'll be happening here, probably this month specifically, but that'll be for, let's say, next meeting.
Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
Justin, are there any ordinance issues in Oxford Township that border on the village that we should be aware of that are in conflict or inconsistent or anything like? or inconsistent or anything like that?
You know, with, with the, with the ordinances, they just had a huge overhaul with their ordinance. I mean, a real, like, it was almost like record breaking how they did a complete overhaul with their, with their ordinances. Updating, I think there was a hundred that they updated, give or take, a hundred and fifty, something really crazy where they spent a great deal of time trying to update those. But there's not. So I have not spent as much time on the township as I have, as I have here. So I'm still starting to start to get a feel, but most of, you know, there's not a lot of, most of the things that are coming specifically to the township have to deal with specifically developments, mostly all developments of what's, what's a request. Where we get, not comparing by any means, but we're getting signs and some other things. But yeah, it's just, I would say it's a slightly different.
I don't believe we have anyone from the ZDA. Well, comments before indicate that there is. And the DDA?
Hi to most of the meetings, I didn't go last night, so virtually nothing on their agenda. They're getting ready to, we have a project going on to bid in one of these parking lot quadrant area over there. Media is running almost all of the, the village is kicking in a little bit. Hopefully get that up the bid here soon. Hopefully have the bids back. And if they come in line with the dollar frame that we're looking at, which is about two hundred eighty-nine thousand, it will be tried to be put in September, October. About October, crush and reshape or rebuilding of the parking lot. We're also, we'd be ready to start the part behind Naps and the old school and building, current school and a building. All, all that cement behind there has been removed and replaced, part of the grant. They got the Consumers Energy.
Sorry, I said, which parking lot did you say?
Northeast, behind Red Naps and the school and the building. That, all that cement and the curb's gonna be bumped out a little bit as it curves around to the south because it's not easy to complain, we're bumping the curb out, wheeling the curb and all of this, and the curbs, all of the buildings are gonna be all new. And that should be done in the next few weeks. And the parking lot bids will be back hopefully by June, middle of June. And if they come in line with what we hope, we'll see. Otherwise, they'll have to put it up, to be rebid it again over the winter, hopefully get a better price if the prices come in too high.
Okay.
So we're just trying to redo that whole parking lot by, by the church and Red Naps?
Yeah, yeah, all up, up until the point of the Williams Art Glass property, which behind it is under ninety-nine year lease of the village. So as you drive north in the parking lot, there's a department stops from Homegrown Brewery all the way up to East Street, that's all private. So from there south is where they reconstruct and new pavement will be. Now, we have been approached, I've talked to that owner a few times, that owns that parking lot, which owns the Homegrown Brewery building also. But potentially working a deal out that that becomes village property. But we're at step one, conversation.
And we'll leave it at that. Any comments from the commissioners?
CJ, welcome.
Well, thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. CJ, welcome.
Take care.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.